I just...
Scraping the windows?
No.
Or you park inside?
No, no way to...
Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order verified compliance with open meetings laws, notification and adoption of the agenda. Please join me in a pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have comments from the audience regarding agenda items. If anyone would like to address the board, we ask that you state their name and address for the record and their comments be limited to one time and five minutes. Would anyone care to address the board? I think most of you are here for a presentation. So, would anyone like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to introduction to the new pilot program. Whitnall Plex, is there a certain way to say that? Plex, Plex Teams for the 2015-16 School Year. So, welcome everyone.
Okay, so, I just, you saw most of the information in your board packets, but I just wanted to spend a little bit of time just talking you through a little bit of where those came from and what we're intending to do. And we wanted to make sure we came and visited with the board to talk about all the great innovative stuff that's occurring here in the district. So, we talked a lot about early in the, in the school year during our August Institute about the two most important pieces that John Hattie had figured out through all of his meta-analyses. And he said that we need to have our teachers see their classrooms through the eyes of their students and students need to realize that they are their own best teachers. When we have classrooms that mirror those two things, we're maximizing opportunities for students to learn. So, in order to do that, in order for teachers to see classrooms through the eyes of their students and for students to be their own best teachers, you need an environment in which learning can be personalized. And personalization is not the same as customization or individualizing. It's very different. And as you can see, I included a definition so that you can look it up and have a nice complex definition. But in short, there's a handout that you have in front of you that's much easier to read than this one. And it kind of talks you through differences of differentiation and individualization and personalization. The bottom line is if you look in the second row down, if you look at personalization, personalization centers around the learner. The other two center around the teacher. So, the teacher is the doer of differentiation. The teacher is the one who's determining the curricula and then giving students different options. In individualization, the teacher is the one who's looking at a student's situation and giving them what they can or cannot do based upon their skill set. In a personalized learning environment, the learner is the one who makes that decision. Therefore, students are involved in setting their own learning goals, determining their own needs and determining their own skills, and then figuring out ways in which to learn or promote their own growth. So, a couple of key points in a personalized learning environment, and if you Google personalized learning, you'll come up with lots of things. Mass Consciousness Learning, they have all kinds of great stuff out there. But, a lot of the common threads to personalized learning are that they're multi-age in that it's not one grade level. That allows for flexibility in planning and curriculum as well as learning experiences, which leads to the curricular freedom component. Curricular freedom doesn't mean that you just do whatever the heck you want. It means that students are able to go out and seek different opportunities based upon their needs, their wants and their skill sets. So, it's a very different, it's not the prescribed curricula. Open your textbook to page two and begin with math problem one and do problems three through sixteen, a seventeen odd tonight for homework. It's not the lockstep because when we get lockstep or too lockin' step, then we leave people behind or we hold people back. And the idea is not to do that. One-to-one technology is recommended in order for differentiation to occur. Multi-grade teacher collaboration is very important. It's not about the first graders on that part of the room and the second graders in that part of the room and the third graders in that part of the room. They each have a grade level teacher. It's about students working in teams and groups. And it's about teachers collaborating with each other in order to provide different experiences, not necessarily by grade level. It's inquiry-based, it's learner-goal-based, you can read all this stuff, I won't go through all of it. But, a couple of the key components that we, when we were investigating, saw as essential. Number one, reading becomes the student's lifeline rather than what the teacher says. Through inquiry and through discovery, students are reading constantly, interacting with text, interacting with each other. That's the way that they learn. Therefore, reading becomes the lifeline of the classroom. There are mixed ability levels and groupings. When we did site visits, you sit there and watch, you cannot tell who the special education students are. You cannot tell who the gifted students are. They're all working with each other in mixed ability groups and they're all moving at their own pace although they are interacting. And the last piece is that we talk about personalization here. We talk about engaging, you know, citizens for a global economy. Well, our whole world is all about customization, isn't it? Black Friday deals started already today. If you didn't know, I came home and my wife was already on Kohl's because apparently the stuff that they're gonna have on Black Friday are like apparently online right now. And if you open up a website right now, it's gonna say, "Based upon your past purchases, we recommend that you buy all these things." It's all about personalization. It's all about looking at interests and saying, "Now, based upon your interests and based upon what I know about you, you may be interested in this." And that's really what the classroom is set up to be. Not that we'll have a Black Friday activity, but maybe we will, who knows? So, this is the history in the Whitnall School District. We started with an innovative education team and I had talked to the board about that quite some time back. We did a book study, we did some site visits, we did a lot of literature review, we did a lot of investigation. And as a result, teachers put together these wonderful proposals for innovation. And one of the big proposals that came from the three elementary teams, one proposal dealt with co-teaching and collegiality and collaboration, one dealt with a learning environment that was different than what we were used to, and the last piece talked all about a flexible curriculum. And the idea in a personalized learning environment is that all three of those things are present. So, what we did was we said, "How can we combine all those into one environment and start looking at where we can move forward?" And that's where that came to be. So, during this year, I met with Chris and Lori and we talked about kind of the viability of this whole piece. And then Joe and Jill, as far as instructional coaches, were brought into the mix as well as Lynn Leroy from the middle school. And we all kind of just sat around and talked about timelines and how that would work. We gathered a number of teachers who were interested in pursuing this pilot and did a site visit to Section Elementary School in Maguango who are in their third year of this implementation, asked a lot of critical questions, got a lot of critical facts, got some pretty honest responses. And then we took applications from teams of teachers who wanted to participate in the pilot this year. And the idea at this point now is now that we have these teams of teachers is to move forward with the rest of the planning, which is going first and we're gonna, you know, reaching out to parents, explaining what this whole thing is about, curriculum development, investigating what the environment looks like for a pilot in 2015-16. And that's really important. We talk a lot about the word pilot. Pilot means it's a trial, for lack of a better word. This is not a program. This is not something that we're gonna be married to no matter what. This is about trying it out, seeing what works, seeing what doesn't, making adjustments or modifications based upon what we've learned and moving forward in some way, shape or form. So, I'd like to introduce to you some of the most innovative, trailblazing teachers in our district. That's our wagon there in the Desolate Valley. They're all loaded up in there. From our Hales Corners team, we have Katie Coons, if you want to just stand up. Steve Morsey and Nikki Nowak. And Edgerton, Chelsea Linder, Cassie Kraus, Tiffany McGow, did I say it right?
McGow.
McGow, ah. See, you guys joke about it too much and then I, it's like, because all the kids, she just was recently married, so all the kids are making their own decisions on that. And Rachel Metal. Now, one thing we want to talk about, we talked, three teachers, three grade levels in each classroom. Rachel's a special education teacher at Edgerton and one of the things that we talked about was in order to differentiate for students, we want to ensure that our special education teachers, that we have one teacher who's assigned to all the students' cases that are in that classroom because it's gonna be a very different environment. So, when they're working with parents around IEPs and making learning goals, we want someone who knows what the environment is like and has worked with that teacher team. So, the Hales Corners folks will also be reaching out to someone there to work with them and serve as a partner in that whole experience as well. Well, this thing is like not blown up big enough. It's really small. But, good thing that you have these all in your packets and that everyone in the audience here has seen this already twice. We talked earlier, the introduction in November of 2014, so we finalized these teacher teams. And by the way, they, I included with, and you saw their brochures. We put on an application and a call for them to apply and just said, "Answer these questions." And this is how above and beyond they go already. They come back with a brochure, not just answers to questions, brochures, pictures and all kinds of crazy stuff. I mean, it's just fantastic. So, right off the bat, they were completely into this whole piece. So, then we wanted to come and visit you and tell you all about these great things and explain the timeline. And then we're gonna jump right into some site visits, research and really start investigating how this whole thing comes together. And that's really important is we have a general idea of what it looks like, but it's not invented. Different pieces are there. So, this team is going to drive this entire change, this entire pilot. They'll be the deciders, they'll be looking at, they'll be the designers, the developers, the researchers, and we will support them with all the resources that they need. So, then we'll look at planning. January and February, we'll be getting most of the planning in there and saying, "What does our learning environment need to look like? What do the curriculum need to look like? What does collaboration and co-teaching look like?" And this is again, planning, this is not actually doing it. And then we would look at communication outreach and applications for students and families as well as development and training, February through June. So, we'll have training for teachers in those three areas, what, how to maximize learning environment, how to work with each other and how to create differentiated curricula. Then we're also gonna educate our parents and our students and elicit some applications for the pilot program. And then finally, we're gonna finalize it over the summer and really get things rocking and rolling and ready to take off at the start of next school year. And that was ten minutes. You have any questions?
I have a couple, actually. My first question is, you talked about one-to-one technology and things, so obviously you're gonna need some kind of technology for the kids. Are there other things that you're gonna need for this pilot program?
Again, we'll have to find out as we look and investigate. But, much of the materials that we saw, other than the one-to-one, are the typical grade level materials. There may be some furniture changes because most of the environments don't have desks. They're more like beanbag chairs or they have little pods of stuff. But, from the sites that we saw, lots of donations where people just said, "Hey, if you've got, you know, some college kids who've graduated and they have some beanbag chairs that you don't want anymore on your house, just swing them our way, we'll take them." But, that's what a lot of it is. So, the one-to-one technology piece is probably the one component that seems to be what it is. Our plan at this point though is to take, we'll take the one section from each school to put in. So, you have one section of first, second and third grade. So, the resources that would be allocated to those classrooms would still be there. So, you'd still have, how many iPads?
Eight.
Eight. So, that would be twenty-four in the classroom at that point. So, you'd be backfilling from there. And again, whether it's iPads or Chromebooks, we've seen mixed messages, mixed environments, iPad minis, regular-sized iPads, Chromebooks, all off the same cart. Take it. So, kinda wild. That would drive Eric batty, but he's not here, so I can say that. No, he'll watch, on video tomorrow. But, that's the, so those are some of the considerations.
Okay. And then my second question was, can you explain why you started with first through third grade? I mean, I don't know too many first graders that can develop their own plans and goals and learning goals and...
Yes. That's excellent because there are preschoolers and 4Kers that are creating their own goals in the programs that we've seen. So, they can. They can speak the language and when you show them kind of a list of what they're looking for and where they're going, they can do it. So, the goal-setting piece, it's just about coaching them and really kind of giving them the environment that teaches them that. There's a couple of things, I can, in full disclosure, both of my school-aged children are now in personalized learning environments in their school districts in their second year. They're both very different learners, very different. One's much more like her mother, organized, very much a practor, follows the rules. The other one is much like her other parent, doesn't really follow the rules, kinda gets a little distracted by things, you know? There were some concerns about how we were gonna be focused and whatever else. And for both of them, the environment worked incredibly well. We saw gains in both of them. So, from a personal standpoint, I've seen it work. And then we did site visits in a number of places where we also saw it happen. And the first through third grade starting point is where everyone had started. They either started with a first and second grade or they started with a one through three, mainly because it allows flexibility with curricula as far as it's more skills-based than it is specific content, number one. And then number two, as far as developmentally, as far as socially, that's kind of the acceptable range once you start getting into that upper elementary and then early middle, it gets a little bit dicier with a three-year age span. You know, if you think about thirteen-year-olds and sixteen-year-olds or fourteen and seventeen, you know, and then you're like, "Okay, yeah, that's kind of interesting."
All right, thanks.
Yep. Yes, sir.
You know, I've talked about this before. I don't remember the age of your kids that are involved in, what grade your kids are that are involved in...
They're second and fourth this year.
Okay. So, and they started this last year, was it?
Yep.
Okay, that's right. The, you know, I experienced some of that myself forty years ago, I guess maybe I shouldn't say, but anyway. And I thought it was a very effective environment, you know, when done, when done well, I thought it worked real well. The one thing is Owens is responsible for their learning, their voice, their choice on how and when they learn. I wonder, obviously I would expect that the lower grades will have more guidance towards maybe how and when they should want to learn versus, you know, just let me know when you want to, you know?
Yep. One of the, part of that is, well, I can use another personal example. I was a little bit, a little bit worried when I walked into my daughter's room and she and her sister are on Google Docs doing a Google presentation and they're writing down all that we did all this summer. And my wife and I are thinking like, "What did we do?" You know, we had a couple of family parties and how did everybody behave? What kind of stories will be coming out of here? But, all summer long, they kept going with their Google presentation and their teachers, when we came for their orientation at the beginning of the school year, said, "Oh, we read all their Google presentations. I feel like we knew everything you did all summer long." So, I was like, "Okay, and that's kind of interesting." But, you know, the good part about it is that even during the summer, when school wasn't in session without requiring assignments, they were still going on there and they were looking up facts like we, you know, when we went on vacation, they looked up the state to see what the state was all about and they did a little presentation on it or whatever else to nobody other than their sisters and apparently their teachers. But, you know, that's kind of what it's more about. It's not as though we're gonna just let a kid sit over in the corner and play video games and then be like, "Would you like to learn now? I mean, feel free to come over and join us at some point." It's more about, the how and the when is more, are we going to say that you need to be able to add whole numbers by next week Friday? Or are we gonna say by the end of this grade level or by the end of this term, you need to be able to add whole numbers? And some people may do it tomorrow and some people may do it three weeks from now.
Yeah, that's kind of consistent with, yeah. I just, when you look at certain lines like this, I figured maybe a little bit of expanding on the concept would help folks. And then, do you foresee any change in requirements for amount of staff or space? Is this gonna be one of the justifiers for, for example, a new, a new school or school modification or something? Or are we gonna have to, do you project a need for maybe hiring new staff out of this or additional staff, I should say, out of this?
No, we have these seven incredible teachers who will be taking their section and just literally putting it together. So, from a staff, from a staffing point, it has no staffing bearing whatsoever. We're not reducing class sizes, we're not expanding class sizes. It's class size for class size. So, if first grade is staffed at, you know, the class sizes next year are twenty-two to one, then twenty-two kids who would be assigned to that first grade section going to the, would be accepted into the pilot for that. As far as physical space, we may need to, we need to look at larger rooms. We may need to knock out a wall or use a room that has an accordion wall if it's available or put a door in or how we're gonna do that. But, that's really, that's it. I don't know that we'd be able to justify an entire school based upon that.
And if this expands and goes, if this goes well and goes forward and expands, you kind of foresee the same thing as far as staffing and that kind of...
Right. Staffing, there's no bearing on staffing at all. Physical environment, there are some pretty significant implications, but from the programs that we've seen, as, as the students get older, even the, like, one through three might be together and then you have a four, five, and then we have, you know, a six through eight or whatever, as they get older, the rooms become more structured, more traditional, more desk space because there's more focused independent time. So...
Yeah, we did, was, I think before I got in there, they had knocked out walls and put in accordion stuff so they could have the big space and then the smaller space. It really worked out well. You guys are gonna, you know, I think it should be fun, should work out well. Thanks very much.
Other questions? Quinn and then...
This would be to the teachers. What made you, what pros or what cons do you see going into this?
I think pros would be that it reaches, I mean, it reaches all students, all learning styles because they're equal. It's very like project-inquiry based as well. So, it's not just, here's this test, you know, answer this test because that's not really all real life either. So, I think it definitely suits all kids, all styles, you know, anything ranging from, here's socialized students, from your faculty students, anywhere in there. I think it really allows for that differentiation for them, so...
Maybe we could give each one of you a minute to talk because you came and we really appreciate that. Feel free to pass. You don't want to, but we'll just go down the line because I know you're excited. So, why don't you tell us why, each one of you?
I'm interested to see, you know, student growth in all areas too. And through all the years, I've seen the kids that are way up here and I want to see how far can they go? What are they gonna do? What are they gonna come up with? And also with the lower kids too that are in the classrooms, how are they gonna be helped with this, with this program? I'm also very interested, again, working with a wonderful team that together, what are the three of us gonna be able to come up with in order to help?
You just wrap it up.
What are we gonna be able to come up with in order to challenge these kids and to see these kids succeed in class?
I think part of it for me too is change. I like change. I like to challenge myself in different ways too. So, this year was one of those years where I said, "Yeah, you know, I'm up for some changes." I've been in kindergarten, I've been in third grade, so I have that range that we'd be working with. Like Steve said, it's a great opportunity to collaborate with our colleagues more so at different levels and more brain power is better for the kids at the same time.
Okay. Kate, anything?
I'm just really looking forward to a new adventure and right now I'm teaching fourth grade and I've taught the younger grades and I'm excited to move back down with the younger ones and get back into it.
How about that?
As they answered, I think the opportunity for more collaboration, I mean, we collaborate now as teachers, but being able to consistently be with our same grade students throughout that time period, several of those first three years and seeing where they end up with their three graders and tracking their progress. And I think about a lot of the special education students that we have in our classrooms and how oftentimes they don't have as high of self-esteem, maybe they're not given as many opportunities to be a leader or a role model, but in this type of model, like a really awesome way you can deliver and that could help their confidence and put them in a different kind of position as well.
Okay. And Rachel?
I have very interesting needs at Edgerton. I've been excited to work with some of them this year and moving into that model next year, definitely have some contact with some of the same students. So, I'm excited to see that forward thinking about how an entire team of teachers can really meet the needs of students together. I think we all have different specialties and when we get together and we can have that time to plan together, it's just gonna make the world of difference for some of the students.
And I'm looking forward to just working with the grade levels. I teach second grade at Edgerton and I've dabbled a little bit in first and third grade too in my teaching career and I'm just really looking forward to the collaboration piece. And two, just like, just watching kids be grouped by, not necessarily ability, but by, you know, or not necessarily by age, but by ability. So, I'm excited to just kind of see the relationships to among the first, second and third grade.
What might one of your challenges be or two of them? What do you think's gonna be hard about it?
That's what we come up with. I mean, that environment, meaning to come up with that environment, what the curriculum's gonna look like. You know, going from there, I mean, there's gonna be tons of challenges going forward with that and then just having, you know, the different abilities in the classroom and making sure that we're meeting everybody's needs and continue to have more growth throughout the, throughout the school.
Thanks. Other questions?
I guess my question, when I was first looking at this is you, is like two thoughts here, is you've got, you know, first through third grade who are coming in with different, you know, different curriculum back, you know, different curriculum background. How does that all work? And then the whole idea of like, you know, within the period of first through third grade, there's probably certain areas of science that need to be covered and traditionally under like Common Core, we just did this matching, you know, mapping out, right? To say, well, we didn't really do for science, but for reading and math and working towards the science. How's that work? You know, how's that work when, you know, traditionally by first grade, you wanted to cover these topics and then second grade, these topics? If I'm understanding this correctly, you have the different age or, you know, what would be grades mixed in together. How do you do that?
When students become their own best teachers and that's, I mean, not to be a trite, but that's kind of the whole point of what this is set up as, is that what you're thinking of is what the teacher's doing to individualize or differentiate. But, if we create a system through our resources where students are able to kind of figure out where they are and where they need to go, then it doesn't matter what they come to the table with because we'll be able to meet them there. Because we'll have a menu of options for them rather than just what we have currently prescribed.
Well, I was thinking like, okay, so for example, I don't know if we still study butterflies and metamorphosis in second grade, you know? So, in third grade, you've already, you know, you had already covered that in second grade.
Yep.
So, how does that work? You, you do it again to the third graders or you just don't really talk about it in class as what they're doing individually?
Yep.
I guess that's what I, and it's not really, obviously, my responsibility. I guess that's what I, and it's not really, obviously, my responsibility for, like, figuring out, but that's just as a parent, thinking, how's this gonna work?
As a, now, the, what you're thinking of is that everybody, the one-size-fits-all approach. So again, we wouldn't do that. So, for example, the inquiry base, what inquiry, inquiry is, inquiry means that I give a range of, I give a skill, for example, or a set of content. So let's say, um, metamorphosis, I don't, I'm not a science person. Let's just, uh, let's just pretend that we're gonna say something, I, I think it's a life cycle or be part of a life cycle, right? And maybe, science people, so let's just pretend it is. So what we would say is, okay, we did metamorphosis last year, and the first year we grew plants, and the, you know, in third grade, we do whatever we do. But they all deal with life cycles. So our inquiry topic, our inquiry idea is life cycles. And what I'm gonna do is say, first graders, what I want you to do is focus on the life cycle, and we're gonna, and you can, you're gonna be working with plants. And second graders, you're gonna be working with butterflies, and third graders, you're gonna be working with whatever it may be. Now, because they're all focused on the life cycle, and they would have to either all do something common, like create a diagram or show, think about the power of this, first graders, second graders, and third graders, after you've done your experiment, now you have to, you have to show us how your life cycles all go together. Because what we're gonna be studying next are ecosystems, and ecosystems are all different life cycles existing within one particular area. So the idea is that the learning actually gets extended. Rather than you just studying one particular plant and figuring out what the life cycle is, now you can say, the first graders can teach the second graders where the plants fit into the whole metamorphosis of a butterfly, while they teach the third graders the whole idea of the metam, you know, whatever life cycle they pick. So that's, so the idea is, the challenge, and, and a lot of them didn't talk about the cons, because they're not gonna say that. But, the biggest con for them is, this is gonna be a crazy amount of work.
I'm gonna say it.
Like, crazy amount of work. It's, it's crazy creative thinking, and these are the most thoughtful people, and these are the most creative people that we have to offer in this district. So I'm confident that, that they're gonna have, they're gonna make it happen. But it's gonna be a ton of work, because just like we just did here, we have to kind of brainstorm, brainstorm through those things and say, knowing what we know here, there, and how, how will it work? So, that would be kind of the thought process.
And how does that fit in with Common Core that we're making everybody else do?
Yeah, it fits in exactly the same. It's no different, because the Common Core is literally, what we did was we took the standard and created a learning target, right? So now we just, instead of teaching the student blindly, do this. Why? Because I said so. We're gonna teach them the learning target and what it means. And then they determine, they can take, pick from a menu of options to demonstrate how exactly they do that. And that's the whole idea. So, for example, let's just take something super simple, like, I can add whole numbers. First grade, math, target. I can add whole numbers. If we say I can add whole numbers, what's the first thing we need to do? We have to figure out what whole means, what's a whole number. So we need to just talk a little bit about that. And we have to talk about adding. So adding is a what? Is knowing about proportions and groupings and things like that. So some students may take objects and physically manipulate them into different piles to create addition. Some people may actually physically write it out. Some people may write their own problems, some people may solve problems. But all students are focused on adding at this particular point in time. And that's where the differentiation comes from. Students are aware of the fact, I need to add whole numbers. We tell them upfront what it looks like, then they go and figure out what works best for them.
You know, remember that speaker that we saw at the, at the conference in Feb, in January, from Baltimore? He talked just about critical thinking, about, we teach one plus one is two, and that's what we know. Remember, in, in that speaker, he said, we, why are we behind Asian and all the rest of them? Because we don't teach critical thinking. We don't teach this whole cycle right here. And this is exactly what he's talking about. Really is.
So it doesn't change the standards. They're still in place, however, it changes.
All the targets will be, yep, the same targets.
Same targets, it's gonna change the delivery.
Correct.
And so if I walk into your classroom, is it gonna look different? Or is it gonna look like they do now? How's it gonna look?
Well, it's gonna look really different.
Yeah, I thought so, how? I've seen some, I'm setting you up, sorry.
We're gonna determine, we'll, we'll determine that, we don't know exactly, but from what we've seen.
But it'll be small groups, it's not gonna be, and we currently have small groups to a large degree.
Well, it depends. Sometimes it's small groups, sometimes it's, sometimes it's the community, because it's grades one through three, so community means all three grades are gathered. Sometimes they are by grade level. Sometimes they're individualized with headphones in, sometimes they're individualized without headphones in, sometimes they're in small groups. Sometimes this group might be working with a teacher, and this group might not be working with a teacher. So it's, it's, it varies. It's never, the whole idea is that the environment, just like the curriculum, is based upon what the student needs, desires, and wants at that particular point in time. There's some structure, it's not as though kids are just allowed to do anything and everything. Um, there's a structure to the day, but when it comes to that time, the student then is able to determine his or her best learning and skill set.
So is it going to be flexible enough to address interest areas of a student, to reach them in the most effective way? For example, you're teaching whole numbers. Well, one kid looks at it and says, okay, yes, so what? I would rather go out and play baseball. But another kid will look at it and say, that's okay, but I, you know, I, I don't understand why I have to know this. I, I wanna go bake. So, is it going to be flexible enough that for the child that would prefer a sports context, that they're learning how the runs are gonna add up? Or they're learning how a double play is turned, so one plus one makes two, and there you've got a double play? And it's more concrete for them, and you reach them quicker, because you were able to put it in a sports context? And the other one who would rather be baking multiples, dozens of cupcakes, dozens of eggs, whatever? Is it going to be flexible enough for that type of learning as well? Because in some cases, I think that's a next logical step.
Um, yes, it's exactly, exactly that way. That's, that's the whole, the whole idea. So we would have, that's, that's our idea of creating a menu of options.
Because that's even creating more work, in a sense, because you really have to know that student, and you have to almost have a profile of that student. Their interests, what, you know, what their life is like, to put it in a context that's going to reach them.
Yep, and from what we've seen, as far as the examples, it all starts with that. They do a profile, and the profile has my personal profile, and then my learner profile. So the personal one is, like, your daughter, and by the way, I wanna put a plug in for her cookies, they were fantastic. They were here in the district, they were really good. Like, I hope she comes out with a Christmas edition, I know those were the, the fall cookies, but if those, like, the ones with the jelly in them need to come back, that's all I'm saying. Please, please bring them back. Yeah, bring them back over here, yes.
That we can discuss later, thank you. Anyway, to answer my question, yes?
Whatever she needs to do to multiply that, to make it come back. Um, yeah, so, the idea is that we are, it's not that the teacher is, is doing anything for the student, but they are just directing the student to where they go. So a lot of it is inquiry-based. The student goes and finds it. So, for example, there are tons and tons and tons and tons and tons and tons and tons of apps, even for kids now, that deal with some basic, like, facts, like all this stuff, math facts, right? All the data, the flashcards. I don't know, I went to Catholic school, we had flashcards, and the nuns would make us stand up, and you'd have to battle somebody next to you, and Stephanie Chang always won, so if you go around the whole room, the rest of us would lose all the time, because she was faster with multiplication. Not exactly a great thing for self-esteem, and makes everyone feel as though they're not as good at math as Stephanie Chang, which none of us were, but still. The idea is that, because there are all these apps out there, you just type in, baseball app for adding. And you'll, you'll literally get an app that will have a kid, you know, be able to add with baseball. So, the students then are able to go and find those, those types of things. And like you said, the teacher would be aware of it, they would look at their personalized profile. But because you have three teachers in one classroom and constant interaction, you get to know the kids a lot more quickly that way too, um, as far as that personalized approach.
But then the next logical extension of that is this, time. Because in a room of between twenty-two and sometimes twenty-seven in that grade level, whether it be first, second, or third, and approaching a quarter of potentially special ed that is either identified or about to be identified, again, within those three grade levels, that kind of individualization and learning those students, not that I would ever suggest our teachers don't do that now, but to the depth for which they would need to, for this type of a model, is it even feasible to approach that twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-five to twenty-seven in a section?
Yes, because, right back to this, and I know that I keep coming back to it, students are their own best teachers. So it's not about me finding it for them, it's about them doing it based upon, so it would be quite simple. If you're into baking, great. You wanna do something with whole numbers, find me something that has to do with baking and whole numbers. See what you find. And they do it, honestly, they do it all the time. It's amazing, it's like crazy that, that they, they just, they'll go out and they'll Google things. There was, my daughter gave, showed me this thing, there's some rap song about, um, basting a turkey or something. She thinks it's hilarious, apparently, that she wants to do a performance for her whole family. But, the idea was that they were supposed to be talking about Thanksgiving, baking, cooking, whatever else. And she found some video of this guy basting it, and they turned it in, she had a study team, and they did a whole thing on multiplication and baking, and they had to make a, they wanna make a meal for a hundred and fifty people. So the, so the idea is, they went out and found, they went out and found it. The teacher said, I need to know that you can multiply hundreds. And they went out and found something and created this whole thing about how they're gonna make dinner, turkey dinner for a hundred and fifty people, because during inquiry, they read that there were about over a hundred and fifty people at the very first Thanksgiving dinner, because it was this entire tribe and the pilgrims and blah, 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 and they came up with it all on their own. So it really was, you know, the teacher kind of lights the fire, asks a couple of critical questions, teaches them the skills to understand what they need to eventually come to conclusion about, and then the students spend the time in the classroom actually researching and going through it.
But then you're also assuming that the student is motivated to do so.
When they're interested, they're motivated to do so.
It'll be interesting to see, I'm looking forward to it.
Yep.
Okay, Jonathan?
So, between educator effectiveness and obviously the group here having to work on this as well, time, you said they're gonna have a lot of work, a lot of time. How's that gonna affect during the day? Especially with site visits, is that gonna take them out of the classroom? And what's that gonna impact their ability to do what they need to be doing now?
Yep.
I mean, are we setting them up to not be able to, for educator effectiveness, come for everything in between? Are we giving them enough resources to do that?
Yeah, educator effectiveness is kind of, I don't know how, how that would quite fit in unless you're on the evaluation cycle and you have observations and things like that. But the time away from the classroom, we did talk about figuring out if we could either, if we have a release day, for example, where we could do that as part of the staff development piece, um, during that staff development time. If we can do it flex some time during the day, maybe like a team member or two are the ones that go and visit, and then they come back and work with the other one. Part of it, we talked about, and Joe's here, instructional coaches are here to support this whole piece too. So, um, believe it or not, as wonderful as all these teachers are in these classes, um, in our district, they have done such a fantastic job in their classrooms that even I could come in and make it happen with the lesson plans that they have. So I walked into a classroom just the other day, actually it was Steve's classroom, and Joe was in there co-teaching a lesson with him. So, as far as the release time, it's a little bit different than what we used to do, in that we're just going to leave them with someone who's coming in. We can work around, around that situation. So, a lot of, we'll probably, we found a bulk of, of, a lot of our work is gonna probably end up being over the summer.
And I just, just to go back to something, I think John, John was talking about, is the innovative spaces. I mean, I really, I really feel like this is gonna require some changes, but, like, you know, like, for going into this for next year, which unfortunately doesn't really correspond or correlate with what we're gonna be doing the following year. So, I mean, feel like we're gonna make changes to then to make changes again, maybe, but I'm just throwing that out there. And we didn't budget anything for this, so.
We haven't budgeted for next year yet.
We haven't, right.
Right, so you, yeah, so you wouldn't be able to do anything.
Until we get through them, right.
Until we would get through, start July first, kind of thing, 'cause there'd be nothing budgeted. So, and again, changes, and then have to make changes again, we're gonna have to be careful about that. Here, or at least figure out how we're gonna work with that.
Well, um, certainly you all demonstrate why teachers go into this job. Because you know it's gonna be a lot of work, and it's been my experience with even our, our longtime teachers, that, uh, that they really put in the extra time and hours that it's gonna take. So I compliment you on that, and I'm glad our, my colleagues up here were raising some concerns about that, to make sure that you get the support that you need to be successful. So I'm glad to hear us all echoing our concern there. I do have a couple of questions. Uh, well, Eileen, I'll mention first, we went to a, I'm glad you're being creative and innovative, because we went to a, we go to quite a few of the Marquette Law, and they have these, um, community dialogues, and we, we, we learn a lot by going to those. There's always some great discussion about different angles of education. Well, this most recent one was, uh, was about Catholic education. But, the part that applies, I think, to everyone was, if you take a copy, and you make a copy of a copy, and then a copy of a copy, and a copy of a copy, pretty soon, it starts to not look like the original. So, they were even suggesting at that conference we were at, right? That it is great, it is probably better even just to take the theory and make your own. There's no one-size-fits-all. So compliments to you for recognizing that. I've seen some project-based learning environments, and I've seen teachers work all summer to get it ready, and I know it's a lot of work to come up with the projects. The core learning targets, the core, uh, is still there, our standards are still there. So your challenge is gonna be to make your classroom more effective for those kids and personalize it, which is what we heard when Eileen and I went out to every, every community dialogue session we did last year, that it came down to that. Even the students told us that, you have to personalize, personalize it to the individual in the classroom. And until now, Tony tried to help me understand the difference between personal and individual. But until, I mean, this is what we need to be doing. To me, this is the future of education. And I, I get to, to hang out with Sister Joelle Reed, the former president of El Reno College. I actually take care of the Marquette things once in a while, and she will always, if she has a comment, most of the time she'll say, we're not gonna transform education until we get rid of grades, first, second, and third grade, because that really does get to the heart of allowing an individual student to move through the system according to their level. And so I'm proud to, that we're moving in this direction, excited to see it. My big question is, how do we measure, two questions, how are we gonna measure the success? How do we know it's really working? What, what data are you looking at? And then, how can we scale it up if it's really working? Because you have plans for like the next two years, but will you be evaluating that from year to year? Because what if some other teachers, more of them are ready? Do you have, I mean, though, so answer the first one, what's the success? And then if it looks that great, why would we have to wait three years if, if more teachers?
And all kids should have the opportunity.
Right, and that, you know, so do you have, have you had any conversations around that?
Um, so as far as actually measuring effectiveness, the students will remain in the same, they'll, they'll be subject to the same testing, obviously, as everyone else in the district. So we still have the MAP testing that we do three times a year. We look at students' levels in both math and, and reading, um, as well as, um, independent reading levels. So, we'll be able to look at those data points, um, as well as, obviously, we'll have smarter balance now, um, next year to see how that comes out. So, we'll be looking at, we'll be able to look at those particular scores and determine what exactly we need to do. We also have local benchmark assessments that we use, so those assessments would still be part of this whole thing. They're aligned to the same learning target, so we'll know, we can look and correlate and say, students involved in this program, students not involved in this program. Where do we end up on this particular continuum? Is there noticeable difference? Is there a little bit of a difference? Is there a lot of difference? And what exactly does that tell us?
Okay.
Um, as far as scalability, it's pretty, there's a myriad of ways that we can scale it. I mean, whether you're gonna go K-three, and then you could always not necessarily do it by mixed grade levels, multi-grades. If you're gonna give everyone the one through, the one-through-three program, um, the one-through-three curricula, and then you still have it all, the first graders in a room, and all the second graders, and all the third graders, you can still create a differentiated experience, it's really just grouping kids. So, um, I don't know, scalability seems pretty feasible, depending upon, upon how it works. I, you know, I think, in looking at all the projects that we have, you know, considerations that we're talking about, I think, you know, that'll be an important consideration, as we look at whether it's renovating or building a new structure at some point. Having the, this is, you know, this is, the ability to kind of collapse walls or create larger or smaller spaces. I mean, that's really what we're looking for, is the flexibility. Architecture's come a long way since then, and they've made a lot more quality, quality walls and stuff like that. So, hopefully that, that would be the way we could look.
This doesn't need to come to the board for a formal vote, you're, it's gonna just continue to roll, because you're using all existing resources. But our role really is to answer questions, and to make sure that we can support this program. So I think you've answered a lot of our questions, which that's, we have to be able to, if someone calls us, say, this is why we're doing it, and this is, you know, we understand what it's about. So thank you for coming to the board. Are there any final questions, and then we'll move into our next?
Just one on the expandability piece of it, if, if more kids want to be involved, or more parents want their children involved, then, then the staffing allows at this point, then, um, how much buy-in is there to this concept from the staff other than these seven folks?
Um, I can tell you that there are more than these seven folks who are interested in the, in piloting it. And these, they worked things out among themselves and didn't even apply, because they didn't, they wanted to not have competitive type situations. So, um, there's, there's, there's a critical mass beyond these, these seven, yeah.
So the interest is there for expansion, okay, thanks very much.
We look forward to a presentation in the future from you all. Maybe we can come even, get a clip of the classroom and how it's working, that would be great, to keep us informed. Thank you all so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, all right. Uh, next up on our agenda, again, thank you all very much, and happy holidays to all of you. Uh, next up is our consent agenda. Uh, next up on is our consent agenda. We will be approving, A, approval of chapter two twenty agreement and number of seats for the 2015-16 academic year. B, approval of new course proposals for the 2015-16 academic year. C, approval of revised Wittenall School District policies. I, policy four twenty-one, entrance age, early admission. II, policy four thirty-one, student attendance and truancy. And III, policy six ninety, disposal of surplus property. Um, item D is approval of the October twenty-seventh and November tenth, 2014, school board meeting minutes. And E, approval of October and November vouchers and vouchers payable. Before we vote on this, would anyone like to pull any of the consent agenda items?
Like to pull, uh, C-three and E.
Okay, so any other one? Okay, so then we will be voting on A, B, C, one and two, or I and II, and D. I would entertain a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Uh, next up then we'll take CIII, policy six ninety, the disposal of surplus property.
Okay, so, uh, what I, uh, I have the same concerns as, as last month. And I wanted to reiterate, um, that it's not a trust issue. It's a process issue and it's also a, and this is in case you guys aren't, don't have your stuff in front of you um, out there. It, it's about the, this, like you said, disposal of the, of the property. When we have, um, uh, a system of checks and balances, we avoid, um, people, uh, subjecting themselves to allegations. Uh, and that's what I'm concerned about, not trusting our folks. Uh, I did receive an email talking about how we need to trust our folks. I think at that meeting, I did stress to you that it's not about whether I trust our folks or not. It's about providing a solid process with the checks and balances so that our folks aren't subject to allegations, our valued staff aren't subject to allegations. That's, that's what it was about.
Did you, uh, review the procedures?
Uh, I did look at it.
Did you find them to be inadequate?
We don't write, um, the procedures, right? Okay, we, we write the policy and I wanted some of that reflected in the policy. I also wanted just to reiterate the fact about the trust.
Okay, so do you, do you, are you okay with this then? Are we, we're going to vote on this as it is unless you make an amendment?
Unless you want to make an amendment, yeah.
Right.
Well, I, I made my mention last month. I couldn't attend the policy meeting this past time because I was out of town. Um, but I mean, my, my concerns weren't reflected in the, in, there wasn't a rewrite on it. So I understand it's going to go to revote. I wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Uh, any other comments?
I'm still not comfortable with the fifteen thousand dollar threshold. Um, I understand where that guideline came from. That was what we have for spending. But I would suggest that spending fifteen thousand dollars is different than selling something. And I'm not, not comfortable with that high of a limit on disposition of the district property. I would prefer to see it set somewhere between five and eight. Fifteen's too high.
Okay, any other comment?
I just have one, one comment. Um, I can kind of live with anything. But, um, I did go and check some other districts' policies because I was just curious, you know, what other people did. And believe it or not, there's no dollar amount listed in, I have to go back and check what it was, but I think I checked Franklin, Greenfield. So it, you know, just as, just throwing that out there as a point of reference. I, maybe Peewalk, I think I did Peewalky as well. Um, but like I said, if someone needs, you know, feels like they want to make an amendment, as long as there's some discretion, so we're not having to approve every desk's, you know, sale. I mean, you know, so that at some point, some, some business can be taken care of without us having to always monitor.
Well, but it doesn't have to be that complicated because here we look at, we're looking, right now we're dealing with something I pulled off of the consent agenda. Why can't it be something as simple as, these are the items that in the, that in the coming month, the school district is, is, uh, planning on doing, just the laundry list of items. And if you have a concern, you can pull it. Otherwise, we approve it. It doesn't have to be that complicated. It doesn't have to be getting into the weeds on it. It does provide oversight, uh, it, it provides checks and balances for our staff. So they can't, uh, so, so they're less likely to, to step into a messy situation. You know, we're all in it together and, and for the public. I mean, that's, that was my whole point. It doesn't have to be anything more complicated than, than what we do with the consent agenda, where we list these items and if you have a concern or question about something, you bring it up. If not, you know, we approve it. And there's, uh, this stuff being on, on the, um, on the agenda, uh, give, uh, enough in advance, gives us opportunity to call up, uh, Mr. Karshna or Dr. Holtz or, or, uh, Mr. Johnson and say, what do you know about this and that kind of thing.
Well, then someone either makes an amendment or we vote on it.
At the moment-
I mean, you know, right?
You have to make an amendment to that, I'll take care of it. Um, an amendment to the, well, let us finish some discussions here first. Um, so you're saying, let me just sort of summarize what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that you would like it a lower number, you can live with just about anything, and you would like it, every item comes to the board, John. That you would take a dollar amount and it should all come to the board? Or are you saying personal property is placed with the superintendent or designee? Responsible for, you'd have to rewrite this thing if you want it different. But I'm not sure there's enough support on the board for that. For every item to come to the board.
I imagine there's not.
Right. So do you want, is there a compromise here? Is there something we can compromise with?
I'm, I'm against, uh, the, the money wise, I'm not, it's here. But the procedures, there's, you're talking about process.
I was just trying to find it again.
Why aren't you reading them? There's plenty of process in place. I'm getting angry here because I don't think you did the homework.
Well, I certainly don't want to make Quinn upset.
Let's pull up-
But, but there, it's pro, the process, they're called procedures and they're in place by multiple people. Here, one has to go through the business office and then to the superintendent.
Yeah, I can't find it.
They're, they're in place.
I just tried to pull it back up and I couldn't find it. So I know it's there because I saw it before and I-
I don't get it.
So there's procedures in place. It can't, it's not an open, let me pull this up. What policy number is it?
Six ninety R.
Six ninety. Let me just pull it up here quick and then we'll, because we can, I think we can find our common ground on this. Six ninety R. Okay, I got it. So in here, the sale or disposal of surplus furniture and equipment, it's all spelled out in here. And it says property, um, it must be author, I mean, that's the real property. Furniture or equipment, all sales in which is, will be documented or on fixed asset inventory forms. They're supposed to fill out forms. And these records are preserved for three years. All prices will be established by the business office on a fair market value basis. Furniture and equipment have little or no value, may upon approval of the business manager and doc, and documentation on fixed asset inventory form be donated to charitable organizations. So anything that we sell has to be documented, furniture or equipment, and held in the business office. Is that correct, Doug? You have forms, so you have files on everything that's sold in this district. Okay. Um, so, and this is surplus, let's see, furniture or equipment will be destroyed, even destroyed shall be documented in a fixed asset inventory form, physically inspected by the business manager? Are we following that?
I mean, I've, I've, I've got it pulled up now.
Okay.
I got it to work.
Documentation submitted to the superintendent, surplus or unusual furniture or equipment. Okay.
The, the problem is, again, it's-
What you're asking for, I think, is in there.
Has it been followed?
Well, that's another issue. We can still vote on this policy, but as far as I'm-
That's our job.
As far as I'm concerned, it is. Until you hear not, we assume that it is. Well?
It's, the actual procedure is business manager or his designee because Matt actually reports to Doug and Matt takes the leadership role in it. And then he'll mention, you know, he'll talk with Doug and it gets, it gets blessed. But, um, to, to address Stephanie's thing on the dollar amount, Matt is here, but he's out plowing because this is a, um, high holiday for our custodians who are our snowplow team because we're all out hunting right now. And Matt drives, said he drives a lot slower than Jim does. So, um, he asked if he could keep plowing, but we anticipated that question. And five is not an issue for us at all because we rarely have anything of that kind of value. And if anything was over that value, we'd certainly be sharing it with you guys. You know, so don't feel bad about, you know, it, it doesn't, we're, we're fine with that. Um, and then, uh, you know, Quinn and, and John are both right. You know, you, you have to follow those procedures and then you do have this, you know, hopefully you have that safety net in place.
And you would update these procedures then? Because if they were not following them, it's up to you-
Matt and I actually talked and we'll-
To bring this back.
We'll put those-
Yeah, we do not-
We'll just clean it up after you guys make the change.
You email that to us then to make sure that's correct. All right. So is anyone going to make a motion to amend it or are we going to approve it as it is?
I'm going to make a motion to amend the dollar amount in the policy to read five thousand dollars instead of fifteen.
Do I hear a second?
Do we, do we make an amendment before we vote on?
Yeah, we're, we're voting on whether there should be an amendment to it, to five thousand. And if there's no second, then that dies. Pardon?
I'll second it.
All right, there's been a first motion and a second. Is there more discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the mo, the amendment failed. Any other amendments? All right, if not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the policy as it's been recommended. Uh, we entertain a motion. Someone like to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
It's moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any other discussion on this? I just thought five thousand was too low. I would have been willing to go higher, but, uh, I would support this. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so I think it was four-three. All right, motion carries. And next up, we would have E, item E, the October and November vouchers and vouchers payable.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's me on two, uh, as well. It's, it's pretty simple. Um, in the minutes, you know, being a record of, of what went on, uh, I had a number of questions, uh, and a couple of concerns about the proposed curriculum for the, uh, for the music department.
I'm sorry, are you, I thought you had E.
Oh, what did you?
Did I get it right?
Yep.
Okay, you did say-
I just said E for vouchers.
You said E, the vouchers, accounts payable. We approved all the other ones?
Oh, the minute, okay, I got the wrong thing. Don't worry.
I'm sorry.
I should have said D, so E, never mind.
Okay, any other comments on E? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the October and November vouchers. So moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Okay, six, old business. A, discuss and take possible action on teacher early retirement incentive proposal. Anticipating there might be discussion. I did not leave this in the consent agenda. So, um, does anyone have any further discussion? I guess I'll just summarize briefly that the proposal has gone around to the committees a couple of times and now it's back here with a minor change where we would, let me just make sure I'm clear about this. Um, we would, no, I guess I gotta get past these vouchers. Wait a second. Okay, I found it. That we would strike under early retirement incentive, item C, the one sentence that says, the employee is currently receiving health insurance coverage through the district. And if so, that would be stricken. Um, otherwise, it's been recommended to come back to the board from the finance committee and the personnel committee to approve this as is. Are there any other comments on this? Seeing none, I would entertain-
Wait, I just need a second.
Yeah, I, I need to find it first. I'm going to get through these vouchers just to make sure-
Page one eighty-five.
I'm just going to get there.
How do you find that stuff? I see it. On the bottom.
I'll use a different program. Sorry.
Next to last page of the document.
Okay, questions? Thank you all for your patience.
I'm good.
I'm good too. I just wanted to make sure.
They're all good. They're all, everyone's good, then I would entertain a motion to approve. The, uh, it's been moved by Jonathan, um, the possible action on our teacher early retirement incentive proposal. It's been moved, I'm sorry, seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you to all of our teachers for working with us and making, and to all of my colleagues for all the additional hours it took to come to consensus and understanding on this. Some of these things take time. All right, number seven, comments from the school board regarding items for future consideration. Does anyone have any future items? Any items at this time? Seeing none. Board member announcements or discussion? Any announcements? Seeing none, we're going to move to workshop session number nine. Um, that would, we're going to just take a short break and hopefully we can pull together at a table back there and hopefully get out of here, unless you want to just stay here. Is up here okay? We'll stay, let's take a short break and then we'll move into workshop session. Does everyone have their copy? If not, I'll have Kathy run another set of the, um, assessment that we took.
So I don't have one.
You don't have copies with you?
Give you one.
Copy machine was broken.
Or wasn't?
We'll see how good you are, Kathy.
Run all those again? You can just kill the tree in the back and then do it right there or what?
You know what, is there, is there a laptop?